Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regularly scheduled council meeting of December 11th, 2018. If you would please stand for the pledge.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris.
Mayor Ziegler.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Beagle.
Here.
Councilmember Gacho.
Here.
Councilmember Kennedy.
Here.
Councilmember Leader.
Here.
Councilmember Resnick.
Here.
Councilmember Smiley.
Here.
Brown present.
Thank you. Any changes to the agenda? Mr. Brown.
Yes, I do, Your Honor. I would like to remove new business item number six and defer that to a later date for lack of information. I was to gather some information that I did not get to and provide for this meeting. We want to have the benefit of that information before we have a discussion on the subject. So I'll probably put it off to either the next meeting in December or the first meeting in January. It might be better to do it at a January meeting since it's a regular scheduled council meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Anybody up here like to change? Add something? Okay. First item on our agenda is a presentation. It's a presentation of the fiscal year 2017-2018 City of Wixom financial audit. This evening, we have Doug Boer and Nicolette Acho here to give us a presentation on the budget for the audit, I'm sorry.
Good evening. Mayor Ziegler, fellow councilmembers, appreciate you inviting us tonight to come present the results from the June 30th, 2018 financial statement audit. As the mayor mentioned, I do have Nikki Acho with me tonight. Nikki really functions as the captain and the manager on the audit engagement and does a heck of a lot of work, so I wanted to thank her. I think she's done a great job this year. Before I get started, I'd also like to thank the city staff that help out with the audit. The audit really is always on top of their day responsibilities, and so in particular, City Manager Brown and his team, as well as Assistant City Finance Director Stamper and her team, they did a great job being prepared for us, having things on time and consistent with the schedule we had set up, so we appreciate that. Thank you both. And there are other department heads and their teams that also get involved with the audit, and I won't name all of them, but DPW, City Clerk, there are a number of things that we request during the audit that I know is, again, in addition to what they're doing in the day-to-day responsibilities, so thank you to the other department heads and their teams, too. In your package tonight, you should have three deliverables, so there's a financial statement audit itself, which is the thicker report that's in there. In addition to that, there's what we refer to as an end-of-audit letter, which is a little thinner package, and then there's also a PowerPoint presentation. And so those are the three deliverables tonight. We are not going to spend a lot of time going through the detail of the thick report, which probably is okay, I would suspect, but if you had questions on that, we certainly could address those. But I would like to start with the end-of-audit letter and then go through a couple financial statement highlights, I'll say, and then Nikki's going to come up and walk through the graphs. So the letter is roughly an eight-page letter that's in here, and it's really broken up into three areas, and I won't go through it in detail, but there are a couple things I wanted to highlight. This communication is really the back-end communication from the planning process of the audit, so Mayor Ziegler may remember that we did have communications with him and then also sent a letter to the rest of the council members that kind of lays out responsibilities for the audit, risks that we've identified with respect to the audit, how we have planned to address those risks, and then we also ask for feedback if there's any other areas that the members of City Council or City Management would like us to take a look at. And so that was on the front end. We send those communications out, so now we're reporting out, here's what we did. And so what I'd like to do is start on page two, and these are some required communications, and there's really just two things to point out there. If we have any type of significant deficiencies or material internal control weaknesses, we do need to include those in the letter and communicate those with those charged with governance, in this case, City Council of Wixom. We did have two items this year, which are on the bottom page two. One is a repeat item that has now gone away, but because it was in play during part of the year that was under audit, we still had to repeat it, and that was a segregation of duty issue. And what it related to was City Finance Director really having unlimited access within the IT database, and because she can make journal entries, does the accounting, it's not great to have someone to have unlimited access within the database, and that responsibility now has been removed, and only IT has full administrative access. So going forward, that item will not reappear. The second item related to one journal entry, which is pretty good, I would say, that we found related to accounts payable, it was a cutoff matter, and so we did include that as part of the review of the accounting records, and it was really a little bit of an unusual item. It was related to engineering services that spanned both June and July, and they were booked in July, but a portion of it did belong in June, so we did have a journal entry that was a good size, and so we had to include that in the letter as well. For a city the size of Wixom, it is unusually, you'd only have one journal entry as a result of the audit, so I would applaud Marilyn for the effort her and her team had. We often see anywhere between five and 15 journal entries in a typical audit year in other communities, so having one journal entry, I think, overall, is pretty good. Moving on to page three, one thing I did want to point out, so this was the first year that the city adopted the new accounting pronouncement related to your other post-employment benefits, and so your full liability is on the books as of June 30th, 2018. This was a point in time before you actually issued bonds subsequent to year-end to cover those unfunded obligations, but this was the first year that full obligation was presented in the financial statement, so that's commented on in the letter. And then, secondly, if we have any type of what we call sensitive estimates that are included in the financial statements, so not every number is an exact number, there are estimates included in your financial statements. In this case, it really relates to your pension liabilities and your OPEV liabilities. Both of those are the result of actuarial assumptions that are estimates, and those assumptions both are investment rate of return, discount rates, mortality tables, cost of healthcare, all those impact, those actuarial valuations. We did take a look at those to see, did they seem reasonable, are they consistent with what we see with other communities, are they consistent with what MERS uses, and we found them to be reasonable, but they still are estimates. Moving on in the letter, I want to just move over to page six. So this is really page three on some other recommendations related to the audit this year, and I want to come back to those estimates for your legacy costs. One of the things that's important is that each year, you take a look at your assumptions that go into both your OPEV and pension liabilities, and it would be the things that I talked about, the mortality tables, the discount rates, and sit down and go through those with MERS, take a look at the actual experience the city is having, in particular as it relates to the cost of healthcare, and make sure that the assumptions make sense for you. MERS has some high-level assumptions they use for many communities, but I think it's important that each community, and there's a responsibility to take a look at, do these still apply to us based on our facts and circumstances?
Excuse me, just for the purposes of the audience, MERS is the municipal retirement system.
They administer a lot of the plans on behalf of the cities. It's basically a multiemployer plan that many communities belong to. Thank you. So just, I think it would make sense to sit down this year again, meet with the actuaries, go through the assumptions, make sure they make sense for the City of Wixom. On page seven, just a couple quick legislative items, and I know City Manager Brown does a good job of updating you, but one that just came out recently was Public Act 57, the consolidation of the tax increment authorities, and this really impacts both your DDA and your LDFA. I know your LDFA is starting to use up the funds that is collected, but the DDA will be under a new act now, and there are some additional reporting requirements as a result of that, as the state continues to move forward towards full transparency across all spectrums of the local governmental units. So with that, I was going to end the letter and just maybe quickly cover a couple high-level comments, and then have Nikki come up and speak about the graphs.
Excuse me. I have a question regarding the letter.
Yes, please.
Since the one material issue was just a cutoff.
Yes.
For fiscal year, why is that considered a material deficiency?
The dollar amount that was involved was a large enough amount that we felt that it met the threshold for being a material weakness.
Okay.
And that threshold is a relatively low threshold based on the standards.
Okay. So that's the only reason?
Yes.
The dollar amount?
Correct. Yes, yes. Exactly. So if it was a utility bill or something like that, we wouldn't be talking about it, because that would not be considered material.
Thank you.
So a couple quick high-level comments on the financial statements themselves. We did, Plan Bran, did issue an unmodified opinion on your financial statements. It is the highest form of assurance you can receive from a third-party independent audit firm, so I think that's good. What that says is that the numbers are materially correct and the disclosures are materially correct for the City of Wixom for the audit year ended June 30th, 2016. We're not going to go through budget items, but just so you know, your general fund came within 3% on the revenue with 5% on the expenditure side related to your budgets, so overall, I think that's a pretty good measure, and both of the variances that occurred, both on the revenue and expenditure side, were favorable. The city did plan to move about $2.6 million from the Budget Stabilization Fund this past audit year over to the Capital Improvement Fund, so that did happen. You see that in the numbers, and about $1.2 million of that was spent in fiscal year 2018, so that seemed like a highlight to me. The city invested over $5 million in its capital assets this past year, both infrastructure and facilities, and Nikki's going to cover a graph that kind of compares over a multi-year period your investment back into the city with the annual depreciation, just to give you a little bit of a barometer for that, so I wanted to mention that. The city did pay down about $1.6 million in debt this year and took on no new debt as of June 30th. Subsequent to year-end, though, as you know, you issued about $22 million in bonds to fund the unfunded OPEV and pension liabilities, and that also is a subsequent event footnote in your financial statements indicating that that event did happen. So with that, I was going to pass it over to Nikki and have her walk through the graphs and be happy to answer any questions along the way. Thank you.
Thank you. So looking at the graph, this first slide, so this graph shows a five-year trend of your general fund revenue. Total revenue of $11.6 million is up about $435,000 from last year, or 4%. Property taxes, which you can see, is the city's largest revenue component at 66% of your total revenue, so that was up about $270,000, or about 3.6%, mostly in taxable values, and those were up from prior year. Cable franchise fees, I just wanted to point out, those do continue to decrease as residents are opting out of traditional cable services. And then the other revenue component that we show here, this is up just because of the equipment rental that the general fund charges to other funds. That revenue was up this year. This second slide shows your five-year trend of general fund expenditures. Total expenses of $13.2 million were up about $3 million, or 29%, and as Doug pointed out, that increase is primarily due to the transfers out of the budget stabilization.
Can you speak into the microphone a little better for me?
Yes, sorry. So that increase of about $3 million is, as Doug pointed out, primarily due to the planned transfers out of budget stabilization for capital improvements. And then all of your other general fund functions remain relatively consistent from prior So moving to slide three, this is your five-year trend of revenue and expenses in the general fund compared to the unrestricted fund balance, so this is the combination of committed and unassigned, which is the fund balance that's truly available to the city to spend. So as you can see, the city has done a nice job of managing within its means, increasing that unrestricted portion each year, and then now in 2018, taking those reserved funds and putting them back into capital improvement. So when we typically look at the health of a fund, we tend to look at the available fund balance compared to annual expenditures, and for a city your size, it's usually a range of 15 to 40%, so at 6/30/18, the city is at 43%, and so that really puts you in a nice This next slide, so this is the six-year trend, is the same information as the previous slide, but for all of your governmental funds, so many of which have money specifically restricted for certain things due to the revenue source, but you can see that same upward trend, and fund balance continues to grow, and then the Capital Improvement Fund and the Road Fund really account for a majority of that fund balance that's available to spend. This next slide gets into the Water Fund, so this is the six-year trend of water operations, and so the Water Fund did have an operating loss of $500,000 this year. However, if you take into account depreciation expense of $750,000, your rates are being set to cover those operating expenses. Revenue and expenses were up slightly, mostly revenue-driven, as your units filled, as well as the rates were up from prior year. This slide shows the same information for your Sewer Fund. Again, sewer had an operating loss this year of $340,000, but backing out depreciation of about $1 million. Again, those rates are being set appropriately to cover your operating expenses, and the same story goes for sewers as it did for water. There was a slight increase to rates and units filled, which drove your revenue up. These next two slides are what Doug had referred to, and the purpose of this graph is to really show the trend of your capital investment compared to the depreciation of assets currently in place, and so it's, we're trying to paint the picture of, are you reinvesting in infrastructure at the same pace as the useful life of your current assets is decreasing? And so this graph is for your general government, for the city as a whole, and then this kind of shows that same information just for your enterprise funds.
So that's something you have to take a look at over a period of time. You can't really look at any one year by itself, and what we found, the number of communities back in 2008, 2009, maybe through 2013, there was a lot of deferred capital investment because at that time, everybody was trying to watch their resources very closely because it wasn't clear what direction the economy was heading. But you can see over a period of time, on the enterprise fund, you've invested above really where the annual depreciation has been, and that's mostly in water and sewer mains. And on the governmental side, you're starting to catch up now, being in excess of really what the annual depreciation is over that period of time that was there, and you're budgeting additional capital items, that's why you moved those budget stabilization funds over to the Capital Improvement Fund, so I suspect that that trend on the far right of this graph will continue for 2019.
And so those are really the highlights of the financial statements, unless you had any questions or things in the statements that you would like us to cover?
No questions? Thank you very much.
The Satcho are severely disappointed we're not going to go through the package in more depth here, but we'll get through it somehow.
Next year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Your Honor, if I could just say something real quickly?
Please.
I wanted to congratulate Mayor Stamper and everybody in finance on the outstanding job that they did, as Doug covered in a couple of different ways there. We have a great grasp of what's going on financially within the city, and adds to the good efforts of Marilyn Stamper, our finance director, and all of her staff, and we appreciate that, and wanted to congratulate them on doing a great job on this, as well as all the other departments that participated in the process as well, but Marilyn and company are the point people on that. I just wanted to express my appreciation to them for that.
Thank you. Thanks, Marilyn. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of November 27th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Support.
Any changes, deletions, corrections, anything? I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. There's one item of correspondence in the packet, a letter of thanks from the City of Escanaba for us supporting their efforts in the litigation that they're involved in. Next item on the agenda is the first call to the public. And I will read the rules for public speaking. The call to the public. The public shall address the council during the call to the public, which shall be included on the agenda immediately after correspondence and again immediately after new business. The first call to the public immediately after correspondence shall be limited to agenda items only. A person shall not address the council in excess of five minutes unless the time is extended by a majority of the vote of the council present. Persons wishing to address the council shall identify themselves in their place of residence and shall state their reason for addressing the council, and all comments by the public shall be made directly to the council. Anybody here this evening wishing to speak on any agenda items? This is your opportunity to address any items we might be discussing later, so feel free Just a reminder that we are recording these, so you're on candid camera here, just to let everybody know. Hi, Brian.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Brian Mitchell. I've been 18-year resident of Wixom, and I'm here to address the ordinance amendment that's being proposed, 5.10.0790. And I did watch the video from the last city council meeting minutes, and I'd just like to say one thing I forgot to mention. I'm representing the Loon Lake Woods Homeowners Association. I'm currently the vice president of board, and we have five of our board members here tonight and some of our homeowners as well. So about a year ago, I got word through email that this ordinance was being approved, and it was music to my ears, it was music to our whole sub, that solicitors, for the first time, could be barred from the sub, and we could actually have some control keeping out solicitors. As soon as I heard it, I mentioned to the board, at that point, I wasn't on the board, but I pointed out to the board that we had an opportunity now to put signage in our subdivision to keep out solicitors, peddlers, canvassers, and I proposed that we go ahead and order signage, figure out the proper verbiage, and stake the signs in our sub. So over the course of, I think, three, four months, over the summer, we had the signage printed up. I personally planted them in the ground, and for the first time, we felt a little protected from solicitors coming in the subdivision. Now, recently, I got word that there's some concern about illegality or protection of the First Amendment rights for people to speak their piece, and I understand that, and my concern is that we put the signage out there, and it's doing a fantastic job. I think we've had very little concern from our homeowners about the fact that we put it up, but we've got a lot of appreciation for what it's accomplished, and we feel a little bit more security because of the signage. So I guess, for me, it would be a step backwards to take the signs down, and I see in the proposed amendment that each individual homeowner would then have the opportunity to post their own sign or sticker, letting the solicitors know that they can't trespass, they can't solicit, they can't canvass, and that's great, however, from an aesthetic standpoint, it kind of mucks up the look of the neighborhood, and, secondly, it's not very universal. It doesn't look good in our sub, I don't believe. I would propose to the city council that instead, that the city consider, when someone comes in to apply for solicitation permit, that you hand the solicitor a list of the homeowners that have pre-approved solicitation, and that they can only solicit to those homes. Then the people that don't want to answer the door to a solicitor doesn't have to. So it's another approach. It would accomplish the same thing, but then we don't have all these little signs. I think the new ordinance proposal says it would be a three-inch by four-inch sign posted in front of each home, and so I think that would be a more efficient way of getting the same thing accomplished. That's my suggestion.
Thank you.
Evening. My name is Gary Atland. I have been a resident of Wixom for almost 23 years now, 22 years and a couple months. I also live in Loon Lake Woods, and we, my wife and I, are actually supporting the changes that you've made in the proposals, in the ordinance, because specifically around the canvassing, we believe that that is a First Amendment right and has been proven by the, or approved by the Supreme Court in a number of cases, and I'm surprised that the city lawyer had provided, in my opinion, poor recommendations as to how the ordinance should have been worded. I think a very simple Google search would have shown that canvassing is something that is protected, and as the meeting from two weeks ago, Mayor Ziegler clearly stated that how does a new person running for an office introduce themselves to their neighbors in the city and try and promote themselves to a position of importance within the city or state or at a federal level? So I think we are short-sighted in how we've approached these signs, and I think, quite frankly, I find them to be un-American, which is a unique statement for me, coming from that I was not born in this country, but I am an American citizen at this point. So that's my view on this, even though I live in the same neighborhood as the previous speaker. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kelly Shroba, and I live in LeWester Mews, 2047, Brasmere Lane. I wasn't planning on speaking, I was just coming in support. I did canvass for the first time this election process because I felt strongly, and knocked on two, 300 doors, wrote letters. Anytime someone said, "Please no," okay, we left. And for any no that we had, the many, many people I spoke with who thanked us just for coming, even if they disagreed, said, "No, I don't agree with you, but thank you for your time and thank you for putting the word out, this is democracy," or to contribute. To say that we should put a sign up in a neighborhood is to assume the opinions of everyone in the neighborhood, deciding the free speech rights of the people in that neighborhood. Soliciting and canvassing are different things. One's asking for money, one's asking for you to think. I feel very strongly, so I'm a little shaky, and I'm a little disappointed that someone would feel the need to represent their entire community by putting a sign up. Any door that said, "Please no soliciting," I was not soliciting, and many of those doors with soliciting, I had good conversations with people because we are not soliciting. Anytime that there was a "No canvassing" sign on someone's door, and I'm not talking of post at a door, this is like a couple inches, that just says "No canvassing," I saw maybe two, I turned around and walked away. No trespassing. On someone's private residence, I turned around and walked away. That is a private residence of that home, not of a neighborhood, not of a city, not of a country. Can we please have our free speech back? It starts at this level. Free speech is being denied. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Chuck Villanueva, and I've lived in Loon Lake Woods for 23 years. I'm an original member, and I'm now vice president of Loon Lake Woods Association. And two months ago, I received an email from one of our constituents, and he says to me, he says, "It seems that Magic Windows has chosen to ignore our posted signs regarding canvassing and soliciting in this subdivision. Further, when it's pointed out to their employer, employees regarding the signs that they asked to leave, they instead choose to enter into the semantics dialogue about whether they're doing anything to violate the posted ordinance." Yesterday afternoon, while I was reading these out front, a white, unmarked truck stopped, and the young man came up to me saying he was from Magic Windows. When I told him about signs, he said that he was asked into the sub by homeowner on Forest Bay. Evidently, in Magic Windows' eyes, that means all bets are off regarding our posted signs. I did not ask him to stop here. I live on Whupbridge Lane, and I asked him to leave. The last time since that employee became very arrogant, I called Wixom Police. They did respond, but the employees had already left the sub by the time the car arrived. Truthfully, the police have better things to do than chasing the company out of our sub. And he asked, "Are our signs worthless, or can we, our board contact this company in writing with a copy of Wixom Police report to stop that practice of ignoring the ordinance? Can our mayor help us out in all of these issues?" I doubt that I'm the only one in the sub with the same and similar experience regarding this company. When does that stop? And signed it. And I turned around and sent a letter to Mr. Josh Cork, his manager at Magic Windows. I wrote, "I am forwarding you this email to you as one of your contract salesmen apparently does not appreciate good business practices in dealing with customers in our subdivision." He chooses to argue with the person he is dealing with, and he is told that if we have posted three signs in our entrances, telling all that we have no soliciting signs according to the ordinance of the city of Wixom and Loom Lake Woods. I hope that you're correct in this part. I have not heard from Magic Windows, but I am upset as the president, because I hear from some of the people that live in my subdivision, and now we can't do anything. I'm upset, because there are old people that live in our subdivision that don't want to be bothered, they might be ill, have trouble walking to the door and answering the door. We have young wives that have babies to take care of, and somebody comes knocking at the door, what do you do? Do you answer, or do you say, "Whoa, I don't know these guys, they're not expected"? So this sign helps to keep, as I feel, keep a lot of our subdivision. And I would hope that anytime a resident of the city of Wixom or my subdivision, the police will respond at each individual case, and take the names down of whoever is in our subdivision that they don't belong there. We've had two break-ins into a house that we have in our subdivision that is being sold, or trying to be sold, since the people have moved out. So we appreciate the fact that we have the police come to help us out. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Tony, but I'm at 2098 Hopkins Drive, Wixom. And I, as you guys know, I haven't been here quite a while.
We've missed you.
Yeah, I've missed you guys too. So my question is, is this ordinance, you're talking about taking the signs away from the front of the entrances that say "no soliciting," is that correct? Or you want to enforce them?
My understanding is it doesn't require them to take them away, but any future ones would probably not go up, because it would not be supported by the ordinance.
We have two signs at each entrance, okay? Since I retired, I'm home all the time. I've approached several of the solicitors, it says "Magic Windows," and I've been very polite to them and said, "There's no soliciting." When people in my neighborhood, they bother them, they don't call, the first thing they do is call one of the officers and say, "There are people soliciting in our neighborhood." I have been called everything in the book. I've been, said, "Go ahead and call the police." I've asked several of them to leave, and they turned right around and went, until I finally ran them out by the threat of calling employees. You know, I was in business for a good four years, and I understand where these people are coming from, I really do, but I also understand where the residents are coming from, when they, robo-calls, and all that constantly bother, and you like to live in a peace and quiet. And I know that some of the rules with no soliciting even could go to the part of trying to collect dues in your subdivision, I understand that. I hate it when we have to tell these, you know, some of these groups that are looking for help in college and all that, or young kids that are working, but it's all the rest of the ones that won't listen and just keep coming back and coming back, and I don't know how you can do it. We have, you know, it's just, it's a pain, and it's hard on the city of, your officers coming out and, you know, and running them off and stuff, but it's like, you ask them very politely, and I know a lot of places, it was before me, now that I'm the president of our sub, they would yell and scream at them, that doesn't do anything, but it is to the point of where, you know, they just totally want to ignore you until you pick up the phone and they leave them, so I don't know which is the best way to deal with it. But a lot of our residents do have signs, no soliciting means absolutely nothing to them, and so, I mean, if they can't see the sign coming into the subdivision, you know, I don't know. That's it.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Melissa Claybin. I live in Loom Lake Woods. I am currently their secretary as well. So I am actually, the house on Forest Bay Court that Chuck was referencing in his thing, Magic Windows came into our sub and started that in Forest Bay Court, way in the back where I'm located. They saw stones in my front yard, near my front door, that said, "The Claybin family, Melissa and here," and then my two kids' names. We did not answer our door. They took that information to use throughout the sub and told whoever they went to that we were the house that invited them in, and that we were getting Magic Windows put in. Additionally, this third-party salesperson gave our information to Magic Windows, who showed up for an appointment that he scheduled on our behalf without our knowledge. So we have, I hear that we have something with Magic Windows going on, and I listened to the, or watched the YouTube video from last time, and I heard reference to it, not making note to them specifically, and I'm listening to everyone else speak, and I hear what everyone is saying, and I agree with everything that's said, and I agree with everything that was said by all of you at the last meeting as well. But we need to do something with the term soliciting and keeping that on a sign, to keep them out. We have a meat truck coming through our sub that was just there a few weeks ago, where this guy with the schooler in the back of his truck comes up to everyone's doors and tries to sell them meat. A couple of weeks ago, we had a couple men coming up to the door during the day, no identification or anything. I'm the stay-at-home mom. I'm one of the moms in our sub that's home every day. I don't feel safe answering my door. So unsafe that we actually installed security on our house recently, because our house, my car was actually broken into at my driveway. So we have people coming through the sub during the day, and my husband and I work from home during the day, so we see, we see them at our door, whether we answer or not, we know who they are. Then we see them going across the street to other houses in our sub, blocking their entire property, not just going to the door to solicit them, but blocking their property. So we're calling the police, and we haven't had much, which helps, but I don't want to be calling, because there's so many better things the police could be doing. So maybe the issue isn't, you know, getting rid of the sign or keeping the sign, and you guys talked about, what is the definition of canvassing, soliciting, and peddling at your last meeting? Maybe we need to look at defining those things, and what's allowed or not allowed, and addressing that versus getting rid of the sign, because the sign does offer us some protection. I mean, the one house that was broken into is across the street from me, the one that he referenced. On two occasions now, they've actually come back. We don't, it could be related, maybe not, maybe it's teenagers, we don't know, but keeping people out of the sub that don't belong is something that's very good. No one's going to turn away a Boy Scout, or a Girl Scout, or a religious group that comes through the door. We may say, "No, thank you," but that's not where the concern is. The sign adds some protection to the sub, because the people that are up to no good know that sign's there, and know that they're going to get called. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Nicholas Bagnolo. I reside at 3066 Bennington Drive in the Hillsborough neighborhood. I've lived there for approximately two years. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak at the last council meeting, for bringing up this topic. I did want to start with a brief dictionary definition session of, because I think there's been some confusion tonight about, as raised in the last comment, of what some of these terms mean. So the ordinance as it stands, 510-10, refers to three different types of activities, peddling, soliciting, and canvassing, and I've heard a lot of the residents of Loom Lake talk about soliciting as regards to this Magic Windows, and, which I have to agree, sounds like a nightmare situation, but the way that the city ordinance defines those terms, and I don't need to necessarily read the whole thing, but it sounds like the activities of the Magic Windows falls under the peddling ordinance, which is a lot more strict than the ordinances, or parts of the ordinance, rather, that relate to soliciting and canvassing. Soliciting is defined by the ordinance as the request for funds for charitable, or religious, or political organizations, and canvassing is a non-monetary thing, again, for those same similar groups, political organizations, religious organizations. So soliciting and canvassing are not about selling things to people, that falls under the peddling portions of the ordinance, and the regulations that are related to peddling in terms of getting licenses, having to register for it, the city have to give notice of where you're going into a neighborhood, are very strict, and not necessarily as much so with soliciting and canvassing. I apologize, I have not seen what the proposed changes to the ordinance are regarding to this, I was also not able to find it here quickly on my phone on the Wixom government website, so I'm not exactly sure where that was posted, but I wanted to make sure that there was an understood difference between the people who are here tonight to ask for protection of the right of canvassing, specifically with regards to both political canvassing and religious canvassing, and the other aspects of the ordinance, or whatever the other proposed changes are that might really guard to soliciting or peddling. And I shared a letter with the city manager and the police department after our meeting two weeks ago, that I had received from the ACLU and lawyers acting on their behalf in the state of Michigan, that was sent to the city of Wixom in July of 2017, and I just wanted to share a couple of points as regarding to the legality of the particular portion of the ordinance and the signs as it regards to canvassing. So again, this was sent to Dear Mayor Henkley, City Manager Goodling, and City Attorney Rosati. We write today to express our concern regarding Chapter 510 of the Wixom City Code of Ordinances, governing peddlers, solicitors, and canvassers. Chapter 510 restricts much more than the commercial activities and the solicitation of funds. It impermissively extends its reach to constitutionally-protected anonymous political speech and religious proselytizing. Chapter 510 must be amended to conform with the law, and I'll paraphrase as we go through here, because many of the concerns that they rose with the ordinance were changed before the ordinance went into law, but not specifically this one. So the breadth and speech included in Chapter 510 and the nature of the regulations covering canvassing, violate the free right to speech guaranteed by the First Amendment. The violations include specifically restricting canvassers' access to certain premises. It goes on to say, "In Section 510, in this case 79 of Chapter 510 entitled Posted Property, Access to Premises Restricted, the city has overreached on restrictions including canvassing in this section. The ordinance inclusion of 'no canvassing' in both subsections A and B is constitutionally flawed. The attempt of the city's Chapter 510 to circumvent decades-old constitutional protections is transparent and falls flat. The ordinance is unconstitutional. We ask that the city immediately adopt corrective measures to put this ordinance in conformity with legal requirements. We urge you to respect the civil liberties of your residents and countless active and engaged citizens statewide who seek to engage in door-to-door advocacy. Sincerely, Sheila Cummings of the Cummings &amp; Cummings Law Group." So I definitely relate and empathize with the concern of the residents who wish to keep aggressive salespeople out of their neighborhoods, but again, I think it's important to differentiate between those activities and the activities of people, you know, trying to exercise their First Amendment rights. I'm not sure what the great solution is. I'm not suggesting that signs be taken down, or that adjustments be made to the soliciting or peddling aspects of the registration or the ordinance, but I believe that the non-canvassing signs, or the aspects of those signs that include "no canvassing" on them, are unenforceable, unconstitutional, and as we've seen in neighboring communities, and as we've seen with the letters that the police department received with the recent activities of the Jehovah's Witnesses who were in town in the last couple of weeks, when they were stopped from canvassing in certain areas, I believe it opens the city up to significant legal jeopardy. We had the Boy Scouts with us here last week, their motto was "Be Prepared." I know some members of the council perhaps suggested that because we have not certain, or not yet seen legal activity taken against the city, that we don't necessarily have to worry about it, but I believe the time to act to ensure that that doesn't happen is before any legal action is taken and not after. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any agenda items?
You know, I feel really homeless.
You're sitting there so quiet. Come on.
Not because I don't have a big voice. And I had Brian to, well, my name is Bob Obramski, AKA as Bob-O. You can address me as Bob-O. And I live at Loom Lake Woods for the last ten years, and previous to that, I spent fifty-four years in Dearmore Heights. I moved out to Wixom to have a little peace and quiet, for various reasons, mostly medical, but, and, so this, I thought that Loom Lake Woods should be a gated community when I first moved in, and I found out the legal ramifications of having a gated community wasn't going to happen, so, okay, and then I saw the sign, the sign of no peddling and soliciting, I said, "Well, this is one step closer to having a gated community." All this being said, I don't know if we so much don't want soliciting or peddling, some of us do, there's, these people that do this are not college graduates, okay? And the point that I'm trying to get is that this, ladies and gentlemen, as just spoke, the Boy Scouts being prepared, it's Loom Lake being prepared, okay? Oh, I want us to keep the ordinance, the signage, to keep a certain element on guard that they're not wanted there, okay? And I work with, I'm a window cleaner, we're janitor graduates, okay? So that is, we don't have, most of us don't have college degrees, and it's actually just rather a shady element, actually, I'm sorry to say. I've heard of that, yeah. But anyhow, so that only goes to the people that, like a service industry, the tree kind people, perhaps the window people, the roofing people, they would sell, things are out for a commission, and that's probably a nice American way, but folks, we live in 2018. There's different ways of knocking on doors besides knocking on doors. I mean, there's, it's 2018, there's different ways. Through email, whatever. So I just encourage you to keep the element out of the neighborhood. I really, my wife is, we lived in Dearmore Heights and was six blocks away from Detroit, so, and we never, we never had a problem, okay? And then we come, we come out to Wixom, and I was really pleased that graduates, okay? So that is, we don't have, most of us don't have college degrees. And it's actually just rather a shady element, actually. I'm sorry to say. I've heard of that, yeah. But so anyhow, so that only goes to the people that, like a service industry that treat the tree kind people, perhaps the window people, the roofing people that would sell, things are out for a commission. And that's probably a nice American way. But folks, we live in 2018. There's different ways of knocking on doors besides knocking on doors. I mean, there's, it's 2018. There's different ways. Through email, whatever. So I just encourage you to keep the element out of the neighborhood. I really, my wife is, we lived in Dearmore Heights and was six blocks away from Detroit. So, and we never, we never had a problem, okay? And then we come, we come out to Wixom and I was really pleased that I thought I moved out to Mayberry. And to prove that, I, one morning, I left my garage door open and I got a, I thought it was a ticket in my mailbox saying, "You left, invited by the officers," that's saying that I left my garage door open and this could cause someone to come into your house. I go, "Wow, this really is Mayberry." And only to hear about break-ins and, and in the neighborhood, I go, "Wow, this really isn't Mayberry. This is the real thing. How'd this thing happen?" Well, it's allowing the element to come over and scope us out. And when people come by and solicit, some of them have developed points of soliciting for valid reasons, some of them don't. I would say maybe 60/40, I don't know, or canvassing or whatever. So I just urge you to, and make it easy on your police force to not take action of cause for engagement in different crimes. So keep up the ordinance that you have. And I wanted to address, why would, I'm sorry, I don't know your name is Gatchel. Why did you present this amendment to the soliciting?
I think that's going to be discussed as we go along.
All right. Well, I was just wondering, what would cause a guy to want unwanted elements in the neighborhood? But I'll let that be. I'm just saying that I want Mayberry back, okay?
Thanks. Yeah, this is your opportunity to voice your thoughts and concerns.
Thanks.
My name is Julia Longathen. You've heard from my husband. I just wanted to make a couple of points. When we did hear about this, I sent a letter to the association immediately, as did my husband, saying that this was unconstitutional. As for the people that knock on the doors, I am a college graduate and I knock on doors for many, many candidates. If they tell me to go away, I go away. And if magic window is coming to your door and they won't go away, just tell them that your husband's not home and they won't talk to you if you're a woman anyway. You think I'm kidding. This is 2018 and they still won't talk to me. I don't want them to, but that's the answer. I would like to quote the United States Supreme Court in regards to canvassing. I'm not sure why nobody doesn't, why nobody understands the difference. But as the Supreme Court stated in striking down the permit requirement for door-to-door canvassers, "It is offensive not only to the values protected by the First Amendment, but to the very notion of a free society that in the context of everyday discourse, a citizen must first inform the government of her desire to speak to her neighbors and obtain a permit to do so." That was the Watchtower and Track Society of New York versus the Village of Stratton, the United States Supreme Court. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anybody wants to talk about any other issues on here? Wow. Okay, seeing no one, I will close the first call to the public. Next item on the agenda are the city managers' reports. We have three this evening. The first report is the Fire Monthly Report of October 2018. Anybody have any questions? The second report is the Police Monthly Report for October 2018. Nobody has any questions? The last one is the Monthly Budget and Quarterly Investment Report for June 2018. Anyone? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which event the items will be removed from the Consent Agenda and added to the regular agenda at the end of unfinished or new business. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
I have a motion and support. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is unfinished business. Consideration of the enactment of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances for the City of Wixom, Chapter 5.10, Peddlers, Solicitors, and Canvassers, Section 5.10.1079, by removing language pertaining to the private posting of signs prohibiting peddling, soliciting, canvassing, or trespassing at each entrance to subdivisions, condominiums, or other neighborhoods. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay. Have a motion and support. Mr. Gatchel.
Thank you. Since I'm the one that brought this up tonight, partially explained at the last meeting, but to answer the question that was just posed to me, a part of it is because I've door-knocked as a canvasser as well. I went to college and I graduated college. I don't go door-knocking for nefarious reasons. And when I was out and about and I started to notice a few of the signs in neighborhoods, different neighborhoods, not just Loon Lake Woods, High Gate on the Green has them as well, strikes me as unconstitutional. Because if I'm not allowed to go knock, not even as an elected official in the city, I used to do this before and for other people as well, if I can't go communicate, that's taking away my ability to communicate. And I, growing up, I've always been told we want a smarter electorate. And if you're not allowing the people to be reached by people that are asking for votes, that doesn't bode well for very many people. So more to this point, a lot of the feedback, and I think I was the one that said magic windows at the last meeting too, sounds like we have a magic windows problem. To the point that maybe we need to review our situation with them and let them know they're under review. And as more stories come in that they're violating no peddling and no trespassing, then maybe we can look at revoking their ability to operate in the city in that respect. Because that certainly shouldn't be the case, and I fully understand that. A lot of the complaints, and we even had this discussion last meeting, how do you define these terms, as Mr. Bagnolo kind of read out, a lot of, like, the businesses coming around that falls under peddling, not soliciting. Soliciting is charitable. Canvassing is political, religious, even charitable by asking not for money but just support, maybe petition, signature, something like that. Mainly your for-profit enterprises, magic windows, the painters, when they're in the neighborhood doing one house, they go knock on everybody else's door, driveway people, that's peddling. So to my mind, and having discussed it with a few other people, the goal here isn't to allow the free flow of people into neighborhoods to knock on any door they please. I agree as well that having individual signage on doors doesn't look the best at all. I also think having signs out in front doesn't look the best either, but at the same time, it's helpful. In our particular subdivision, we have three homeowners associations running different parts of the subdivision. So if two of the three have signs out, but our third part doesn't, and someone goes in canvassing and sees the no canvassing sign, and they don't come to my door, my ability to be contacted by those people has been taken away by two other homeowner associations that we don't have a say in. We have to kind of pray to God that they come in our entrance on Amberwood and come to our house. So having made the motion and discussed it with a few others, I'm going to make an amendment just to remove the Solicitors and Canvassers section of the ordinances on signage. We can continue to allow no peddler's signage in that respect, but anything pertaining to soliciting and canvassing from these sections should be removed from the signs and from the ordinance.
Was that a motion?
Yes.
I second that.
Discussion.
I just wanted to clarify something that was brought up when people were talking about the unconstitutionality of prohibiting the canvassing. The cases that have come up in the case law, the problem has been where a city is regulated requiring canvassers or solicitors to get permits. And they're, they're not required to under our ordinance as it currently stands. So the peddlers still have to come, report to the city, get the badge so that they can identify themselves. But the voluntary requirement is what was dealt with in the Cummings &amp; Cummings situation, as well as what our last speaker brought up related to the Watchtower case versus Stratton. That was an issue where a city was attempting to regulate speech by requiring political or solicitation to obtain a permit, much like a for-profit industry. So that's been ruled unconstitutional. But as far as any individual homeowner who puts up a sign, it's your house. I mean, you have, you have as much right to what goes on on your property as somebody who has the right to come and speak to your property. And it's up to both people, the person who's knocking on the door to either respect that homeowner's wishes, or the homeowner to respect the wishes of the person who wants to come speak and provide information. And I hate doing this, Chief, but I just come back to the enforcement issue, just related to it. And I think that your input, at least as it relates to this discussion, is probably as important as anything else. Because if people are calling you for all sorts of things, I don't know the process of how this would go if it were to be enforced, and what you think, I guess the machinations of how this would go would even make sense. So I mean, I'm just, I'm opening up, so hopefully you can address that, so it'll give us a little bit of guidance as to what we're looking for as it relates to the amendments and the motion.
If I can interject before the chief starts, the mayor's, please do. So I'd like to make a couple of comments, and then we can let the Director of Public Safety, Police Chief, talk on what Councilman Leader asked him to talk about. I want to talk about several things, so bear with me. It's going to take a little bit longer than I'm usually prone to speaking at council meetings, but I think there's a couple of things I want to talk about. First off, I want to caution mayor and council against taking, and some of this is going to sound mean, and I apologize in advance, but I think it needs to be said. I caution people on the council from taking advice from a law firm that submitted a letter to the city, okay? We have a city attorney that we take legal advice from. And when somebody puts in a letter saying, "You better not do this or else," I'm frankly not all that impressed, from the standpoint of they may or may not take action on that, and it may or may not be an attempt to try to get you to do what they want without having to do anything like filing a lawsuit. So I'd first off, start off by saying, "Don't take advice from a lawyer's letter that gets sent into the city of Wixom. Take your advice from your city attorney," number one. Number two, the resident spoke about the Supreme Court decision that makes the requirement to permit canvassers illegal. That's irrelevant because the city does not require canvassers to get a permit. So while I appreciate that's potentially factual about what the Supreme Court did, it's not relevant to what the city's ordinance is. It doesn't require that. And the city attorney's letter that I provided subsequent to the council meeting packet speaks to that, right? She talks about a lot of things in that letter, and one of which is the fact that the restrictions, as was mentioned by Councilman Leader, I believe, is, or also by somebody at the podium, the restrictions on canvassers and solicitors far less onerous and mostly voluntary, quite frankly, in fact, all the way across the board voluntary. There's not a requirement to register. We just ask that you do. If you don't, you are not in violation of the ordinance. So that was factored in. The feedback from those kind of letters was factored into the city's action at the time, which was also acknowledged by Mr. Bagnolo when he was at the podium. That was not, that was not unnoticed, and it was included appropriately in the, in the ordinance as it was prepared. Couple of other things I want to point out in the letter that relates to this question. There's a section where it talks about concerns about canvassing and council members being able to go door-to-door. The ordinance, she states, "The ordinance recognizes the right of those people to do that, but just like that, it also recognizes the right of a private property owner to prohibit that speech on their property." So while canvassers do have the right to go door-to-door, if somebody puts a sign on their door, or potentially a sign at the entrance of a subdivision that says you're not to come in here and canvas, then those homeowners have the right to have that restriction and to not have people come to their door fundamentally. So while there's right to free speech, there's also a right to say, "I'm not interested. Your free speech happening on my property," right? So you could post a sign saying, "No trespassing." You can post a sign saying, "No peddling, no soliciting, no canvassing," to prohibit those kind of activities on your property. And just like free speech is important, property rights are important as well, and people do have the right to say that, right? Now, I'm going to go back and soften something that I said a little bit earlier, where I said, "Don't take your advice from, from other people that come up to the podium and talk about these kind of things." The content of the letter from the city attorney does have some language in it that brings to light why maybe this question of having signs at the subdivision is a little bit different than signs on individual properties. Where she states, "The right of a subdivision to post a sign at the entrance," and this is the key word, "appears to pass constitutional muster." Hasn't been challenged, hasn't been proven, hasn't been established. She states that it appears. So if you want to take the approach of eliminating a subdivision sign, that would be the safer approach. Because that word says appears, it's not been firmly established. There could be some question, we might get a lawsuit from somebody that says a subdivision sign could be a questionable legality, and maybe we need to take this to the mat, so to speak, on a legal matter and see what pans out. And does the city want to be involved in that kind of thing? Maybe not. Maybe so. But if you take the action to remove the subdivision signs, that moves it back to an individual property owner having the right to put that little three-by-four-inch sign on their, on their door that says, "Don't come knocking on my door," whether you're a peddler, solicitor, or canvasser. Or they could cover all those things by just saying, "No trespassing," which means you're not welcome on my property and don't come on my property. So that's, that's one approach that is kind of up to the councils to what you're, what you're trying to accomplish, what are you willing to accept in terms of the potential legal exposure that could come about. So that's just a few comments that I want to make related to what was provided in the letter and what's appropriate, I think, to your discussion on this. And it's all relevant, and it's all an interesting discussion. As you can tell, there's some competing viewpoints from, from members of the community here, which makes it obviously of interest for us to determine what's the best fit for the community and for you to make that decision. The last thing I want to say is more of a question that I'm going to ask for Councilman Gatchel to clarify what your amendment means. I think I need that. I don't know if the clerk needs that, deputy clerk needs that, but I need that. So I'm going to ask you to clarify that when you get the opportunity before we take action on that.
Just to clarify real quick, sorry to keep you waiting. Everything that's redlined in your proposal to us in the ordinance, the only thing that would be so weird, it says in Section A, then AB, "No peddler, solicitor, or canvasser shall engage in peddling, soliciting, canvassing." Any solicitor, soliciting, canvassing, canvassing, trespassing, trespasser, gone. Peddling and peddler are still prohibited. You can still keep signs banning peddling and peddlers, but anything related to the others is removed.
And my question is, is that's across the board, both on individual property basis or only on the subdivision signage?
Subdivision signage. I mean, we can't tell a homeowner that they can't put a sign out that says, "Don't come on my lawn."
That was the key clarification I was looking for, so that helps. Thank you.
On the neighborhood level.
Okay. And then I, we can get back to the chief unless somebody wants to ask.
Well, the leader's got to say, cut the floor. Mr. Leader.
No, I was, it comes back to an enforcement question of, if we're going to be changing this, it's on you. And I just think that your input is valuable. So I just wanted to know what your thoughts were.
At the end of the day, my desire is to have the men and women of the, of the police department protect the constitutional rights of the public we're sworn to protect. Having said that, we'll also follow the guidance and the advice from the City of Wixom's legal team.
So, all right. So with, with the magic window situation that was brought up, just from a, I guess just from a standpoint of, they're not going to be staying long enough at somebody's house, causing a big enough ruckus or a problem, I would assume. Once somebody calls the police, then they've moved on somewhere else and are wandering through. At that point, you guys come and give them a warning, you give them a code violation, or, I mean, how, how would the signage be enforced if there wasn't no peddling sign? And what would the ramifications be just from a manpower standpoint at that point?
Manpower is not a huge concern in this regard. If we find that a peddler is violating the ordinance either by failing to come to If we find that a peddler is violating the ordinance, either by failing to come to the city and attain the appropriate credentials, and I'm talking about a peddler, or they're in violation of an ordinance such as a sign at the beginning of, at the entrance to a subdivision, the officer could issue a citation, a civil infraction ticket, which, a civil infraction, for those who don't know, is pretty much the equivalent of a speeding ticket or disobeying a red light. It is a noncriminal matter, it's not arrestable. It's a civil infraction, it's a citation. The officer could accomplish that task in under 10 minutes. And I agree with Mr. Gachal, it sounds like we have a magic windows problem. So, in that respect, there would be very few verbal warnings given to magic windows, given the amount of feedback I'm hearing from the public.
And then, just, I guess, the last question. If, as was suggested, I don't remember which point during, if the subdivision homeowners' association were to provide notice to the police department when a peddler would come for a license, would that, could we provide that information to the peddler and say, "Hey, here's your warning," and provide them the subdivisions that shouldn't go in, that they shouldn't go into, if the homeowners' association have contacted them?
So, when they come to, just to make sure I understand your question, when they come to City Hall to attain their credentials, to provide them with a document saying, "Do not go into these neighborhoods,"
Yeah, and that these are posted signs, I don't, that would be up to the city administration, I don't. Okay. I didn't know where the, yeah, the permit goes through, or the application.
Yeah, they come into a different department at City Hall to get the permit when they're, as a peddler, so.
But, would, if we were provided that information, would we provide that information along with the license? And then, there's their warning?
That could be something we could add to the process, certainly, and that might not be a bad idea, given what the chief has alluded to, and other people at the podium have alluded to, that this seems to be an ongoing problem with potentially at least one company in particular, and possibly other ones. But, that would be one way to have something in writing along that lines, it wouldn't be a bad thing, and would be something to certainly look at, and assist with the problem that is being experienced in the subdivisions with this kind of situation. So, I like it.
That was my, that's all I got for now. Thanks, Chief.
Okay. You're welcome. Mr. Resnick.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, one of the, a peddler, when they're in your neighborhood, I've always asked to see the license. And what happened on Sunday, I just got off the plane, came in from the airport, one came to the door, they showed me their license. I'm like, okay. I just said, "No, I've got new windows." They kindly left, very pleasant. Our subdivision doesn't have it posted at the beginning of the sub. I've chosen not to post it on my residence. I think that I tend to, along with Mr. Brown, believe that we should take the guidance of our city attorney in matters of constitutionality. And, you know, right now, there's nothing prohibiting free speech in the ordinance as written, and I would support keeping it as is.
Anyone else? Mr. Smiley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, you know, going back to last meeting, and then, you know, listening to residents today and discussion, my big takeaways are that, you know, the peddlers are the issue. So, I like Councilman Gachal's amendment. I think that, you know, quickly where I'd like it to be, I came into this, you know, concerned about our First Amendment issue of concerns, as well as, you know, future legal problems that may, you know, become attached with that. It also feels like we're chasing off, you know, the church folks, and the politicians, and the, you know, local, you know, local guys and gals who, you know, want to make a name for themselves, get to know their neighborhood with the canvassing. So, I'm, you know, I support this idea of amending to just, you know, to climb down on the peddlers. We're talking about the whole thing, not, I know there's amendment to this that we're first.
Right. Yeah, we've got two issues right now to deal, first issue we have to deal with is to vote on the amendment, and want to make sure everybody's had an opportunity. Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of the residents made comment about the neighborhood associations not representing them, and they don't have a voice in whether or not the sign's at the front. I say they do have a voice. They get to elect their officials at their neighborhood associations, the HOAs. So, whether or not a subdivision puts that up, I think it's something that's been voted on through each individual subdivision. I tend to agree with Mr. Gachal, Councilman Gachal, about the soliciting canvassers being removed. I see that as a problem. I don't have a problem with the saying, "No peddling," and I'd like to see the amendment that was proposed be accepted. Thank you.
Thank you. A couple of things, I guess, from my perspective, and I've said this before, I consider this a very confusing, it's always been confusing, and I mentioned last meeting, I think, in the 20 years I've been on councils, probably come up before us half a dozen times, from time to time, somebody will want an amendment, somebody will, there would be case law that's developed, there'll be a court decision that has to be considered when they rewrite the ordinance, and I don't know the timing of these sites that were made at the podium relative to case law from the Supreme Court, or, I don't know the timing of those, if that's since the last time we redid this, or not, but I do know that it's an ever-changing situation. My thought is, and I'm not, certainly I'm not opposed, in the overall, to having a rewrite of the ordinance in the overall, but I don't think that what we're trying to do here tonight, or what's being proposed tonight, is really something that is going to make this a clear ordinance, by any stretch of the imagination. There's still going to be, I can tell you right now, that when I go out to campaign the next time, and when I go up to that subdivision off of Grand River, the police are going to get called on me. I just know that's going to happen. And I think I got a right to do it, and, but I got to sit there and wait for the police officer to come, and then, of course, he's in a bad spot, because he or she shows up, and here, you know, looking at the mayor, saying, "What the heck's going on?" You know, he doesn't know what to, or she doesn't know what to do. So, it's really a big problem. I guess, we're going to have the vote here, but my preference certainly would be to do nothing on this, and refer it back to the legal staff, and we can, it's unfortunate that she could not be here this evening to defend herself, certainly, but, and to state her position more clearly. But, I would prefer, and I'll be voting no on both items, but my preference on this whole thing would be go back and do a complete rewrite of this thing, and make it clear to us. Just as an aside, I don't, the sign was up on that subdivision up off of Grand River before this ordinance came into, this newer part of the ordinance came into being, and it's going to remain up there afterwards. And I tend to think that the signs are going to remain in those subdivisions, regardless of what we do here, and it's just going to be, you know, they may end up having a legal problem, but, you know, that's not our business. You know, I'm sure that those subdivisions will be doing what they want to do, and I think Mr. Kennedy is correct, to the extent that, you know, that gets people involved in their subdivisions, maybe, and if they want to get involved and pass the rules that allow for soliciting or anything else, then they should. But, I think that the clarification is needed, and I would strongly urge that we don't pass this this evening, and we, I have the city attorney take a close look at this, and try to come up with some new jargon here, so we can make it clear to people, and, because I certainly would like to see this clarified before I'm done with my term. But, in any event, let's take a look at, Mr. Gachal, I'll ask you to repeat the language that your amendment addresses.
The amendment would remove from the document provided by the city manager that has redlining on it, crossing out the changes, it would be removing the solicitor, canvasser, soliciting and canvassing language, as well as any trespassing as well, from Section A-B. And then, it would all remain intact, no peddlers, no peddling, and then, it would allow neighborhoods to still post a sign, to that effect, no peddlers, no peddling, but it wouldn't be removing homeowners' right at all from posting their own signs on their own property, to any effect that they wish to do so.
Do we have a motion by Mr. Gachal, and a second by Mr. Kennedy? All in favor of the amendment, please? Amendment to the amendment, please, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No?
No.
Mayor Ziegler?
No.
Deputy Mayor Beagle?
No.
Councilmember Gachal?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
No.
Councilmember Leader?
No.
Councilmember Resnick?
No.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Okay.
Five no, two yes.
Thank you. Then we'll vote on the original writing, and would the city manager read that into the record, please?
The wording?
Yes.
"Consideration of the enactment of an ordinance to amend the Code of Ordinances of the City of Wixom, Chapter 510, Peddlers, Solicitors, and Canvassers, Section 5.10.079, by removing language pertaining to the private posting of signs prohibiting peddling, soliciting, canvassing, or trespassing at each entrance to subdivisions, condominiums, or other neighborhoods."
Thank you. And that's the original motion that was made by Mr. Gachal and seconded by Mr. Smiley. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
Deputy Mayor Beagle?
No.
Councilmember Gachal?
Yes.
Councilmember Kennedy?
No.
Councilmember Leader?
No.
Councilmember Resnick?
No.
Councilmember Smiley?
Yes.
Mayor Ziegler?
No.
Five no.
Thank you. And I think that the city manager, unless I'm mistaken, has some direction there to take a look at that and talk to the attorney about it.
And to look at the process related to permitting, too.
Right.
In the same vein, I guess. Understood?
Right, thank you. And anybody else can jump in.
Okay. I did want to make one more comment, is that, and I've done this with Public Safety Director Moore, when I am running for public office, I do send a courtesy email and copy the city manager, that say, "I will be canvassing in all Wixom neighborhoods between October 1st and, you know, November 6th, whenever the general election was." And I've just done that as a courtesy, and every candidate for office that gets petitions and they're on the ballot can do the same. So, it's suggested in the ordinance that we do at least make notifications, so if Public Safety Director Moore gets a call from a resident, I say, "Yep, okay, we know that there are candidates in those neighborhoods." Because I have started with people before, knocking on the door.
As a matter of fact, I just, as a side, I have gone to the police department the last time, and gotten the ticket to wear on my registration, to wear on my shirt while I'm walking around, and that seems to satisfy some people as well, but I know that I don't have to, but it saves an argument or two, so it's helpful. But then, yes, Mr. Kennedy, sure.
I'm for, basically, what Councilman Gachal said, but when you talked about sending it back to the lawyers to see if they can clarify this better, that's what I'm looking for, is a better clarification.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is new business. First item under new business, a recommendation to accept and file the fiscal year 2017, 2018 financial audit. Do I have a motion? A move?
Or?
Discussion. Marilyn?
Good job, Marilyn.
Yeah, Marilyn, I wanted to congratulate you again, Marilyn, for a great job on this, and all the department heads, and everyone involved, and all the things you do, we really appreciate it. I think it makes us look good, and we really appreciate that. So, thanks. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is recommendation to authorize a 60-month lease of a new IN-600 digital mailing system from NeoPost through the State of Michigan Cooperative Purchasing Program at a monthly rate of $136.66 with funds to be derived from the postage expense account number 101-283-730.321, and authorize the mayor to execute the lease agreement on behalf of the city. Do I have a motion?
A move? Or?
Discussion. Mr. Resnick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just had a question in terms of volume, mail volume. In terms of a daily volume, how many first-class mail letters, envelopes do we send out?
It all depends, because if you have, like, a public hearing notice, or, you know, some type of, you know, election mail, or whatever, but on an average, it would be 50 to 75 pieces a day.
Oh, that's, and if there was a public notice of a meeting or something like that, it's more.
Then that could be, yeah, because it's 300 feet radius of the parcel.
But, it could be 500.
Right.
Okay. And as I, you know, a lot of businesses have gone away from machines, but they have much lower volumes, because you still get the same amount of discount on the first-class postage if you go online, versus getting the actual stamps, but it requires peeling them off and putting each individual envelope in. We don't need you doing that for 1,000 pieces of mail.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Next item on the agenda is recommendation to amend a construction services agreement with DeAngelo Brothers for a second I-96 water main crossing, for an additional amount of $11,250 for construction engineering. Do I have a motion?
A move? Or?
Hi, Tim?
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. This recommendation is to approve additional services, basically, for the water main construction. We added approximately 40 feet of water main to the project to move a fire hydrant that we were using for flushing that main, while the rest of the services are under construction. It's in an area that will be a no-parking area, for the most part, so it will benefit the fire department, and it makes sense for Wilson Marine as well, to have the fire hydrant in that location. The other additional services was for the removal of concrete, and there was an enormous amount of concrete in that particular area where we were installing that water main. We did a number of borings under I-96 as we went across, but we did not find this concrete there, so it was unbeknownst to us until we excavated. And it was several loads, dump truck loads of concrete that was removed, and they had to take in a larger excavator just to take it out of the hole. So, there was, those services were above and beyond the quantities that we had originally anticipated. So, we're requesting $11,250 to DeAngelo's contract.
Questions? Comments? Okay. All right. Comments? Okay. All right, thanks, Tim. We have a motion to authorize to participate in the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network -- I'm sorry, wrong one. Right, we have a motion to amend the construction services agreement with DeAngelo Brothers for a second I-96 water main crossing for an additional amount of $11,250 for construction engineering. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number five, recommendation to approve, I'm sorry, request to, number four, I think I want the meeting to be over, I'm not sure. Four, the request for authorization to participate in the Michigan Intergovernmental Trade Network to sell surplus city vehicles and designate Tim Sikma as the authorized agent for the sale of this property. Do I have a motion?
The move?
For.
So we recently received two F-350 pickup trucks, and we were able to install plows on those, and these are replacement vehicles for the 2001 and 2003 Ford pickup trucks that we have had in service since the purchase of them. We're hoping to sell them now just prior to the winter maintenance season, thinking that we may get better pricing for them now rather than waiting until spring. So we would like to have the authorization to sell those at this time.
Any questions? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. New business, item number five, recommendation to approve the Wage and Salary Committee recommendation to make changes to the wage and salaries and benefits of non-union full-time and part-time employees of the city as follows. Increase wages and salaries by 2.5% for fiscal 2018, 19, 2019, 20, 2020, 21 on July 1st of each fiscal year. Second point is increase the city contribution to the fine contribution pension plan to 9%, 10% and 11% for fiscal years 18, 19, 19, 20, 2021 on July 1st of each fiscal year. And then increase the city employee contributions to the retiree healthcare savings plan to 3.5 and 1.5 respectively on July 1st, 2020, and authorize the city to sign the MERS documents to modify the defined contribution and healthcare savings plan documents to reflect the adopted changes. Do I have a motion?
The move?
For.
Okay. Just being a member of the Wage and Salary Commission Committee, I just want to bring to the attention of the rest of the council members that the benefits and salary changes and benefit changes are consistent with, and actually identical to, what was negotiated with the unions in recent negotiations over the past, oh, maybe five or six months that the negotiations took place, with the police bargaining units and then the DPW bargaining units. And that really is the basis for the recommendation. Seeing nobody comment, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a second call to the public, and this is your opportunity to come up and speak to the council on anything that's on your mind, hopefully regarding city business, but whatever you want to come up and talk about, you're welcome to come up and make a comment or two, and we'd be happy to hear from you.
Well, you know, I didn't want to come up for the first time, but.
Come on.
Yeah, I just thought that in your review of the pending or peddling and soliciting poses ahead of you, keep in mind that maybe you make an asterisk to have, that anybody high school age or below could solicit. Or, maybe I'm not using the right words, but sell candy bars for fundraisers, go trick-or-treating, which is soliciting, right? So if you didn't want somebody to ask us to law.
Right.
Okay. So, but if you make an asterisk saying that they can do that, how it works, and I want to thank you at this time for keeping Wixom a very.
Can you state your name again, just for the record?
Bob.
Thank you, Bob.
Hi, Nicholas Bagnolo, I reside at 3066 Bennington Drive in Hillsborough, Everett. So one of the things, city council, for taking up this issue and for having the discussion that we had tonight, I agree that I think this is a matter that requires further discussion. I am sympathetic to the members of Loon Lake. I believe that removing the sign option for neighborhoods altogether for all aspects is probably too far in this case, and that a more surgical strike is necessary to make sure that neighborhoods can still ban non-protected speech like selling and whatnot, and still allow for First Amendment protected speech to be allowed in there. I do know that in my discussions, I am certainly not a lawyer by any means, so I rely on the advice of lawyers, and I appreciate the city manager's comments. Again, I'm not trying to pass whatever I say off as gospel, but it's the best advice that I have. I guess I would appreciate if the next time that city council discusses this, if it's in a city, an open forum, the city attorney could be in attendance to discuss specific aspects of it. I think that would be helpful to all parties involved. To the last gentleman's comment, and again, I'm not an expert on this, but I believe there are parts of the ordinance that do allow allowances for people within a certain distance of a particular neighborhood, students who live in that neighborhood or within 300 meters or something like that, or half a mile, I don't know. But there are proportions in there. The ordinance, as it does stand, is rather confusing, and I know there are other aspects besides what I've raised previously that are areas of concern, especially when it comes to this nomenclature, canvassers or called solicitors and vice versa, and various different things. There is a lot of confusion in there, so I would encourage the council to look further than just this particular topic and hopefully clarifying a lot of things that are in that ordinance, and I look forward to further discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll close the second call to the public. City manager's comments. Mr. Brown?
I'll rely on the, mostly on my city manager update, but I did want to talk about the tree lighting festival a little bit, real quickly, just to highlight it during the meeting tonight beyond the written record. We estimate that we had very strong attendance at the tree lighting festival that was held on Friday, November 30th, with the estimate of the crowd being 4,000 plus. Santa seeing over 400 children. The beer/entertainment tent was at capacity all night. I think the downtown businesses were very happy with what happened in terms of the volumes they experienced in their businesses. All in all, it's a great event, and I wanted to say congratulations to everybody that was involved, most especially the community services department folks that were responsible for putting that new tree lighting festival together. Got a lot of great feedback on the new tree, and I think everybody enjoyed themselves at the event, and look forward to seeing it happen again in 2019, even better when we learn a few things from how things went this time around, since it was kind of the inaugural voyage, if you will. So congratulations to everybody that was involved with that. And then I guess I will also mention the Wixom Historical Society, who came to us via the mayor to talk about an idea to hearken back to the visit that President George H.W. Bush made to Wixom on September 27th, 1992. We had some boards that we had kept in commemoration of that event, and we put it on display at city hall during the National Day of Mourning and the day of the funeral services for President Bush. And we had a lot of good feedback. We had some participation from the historical society, where they had people present answering questions, sharing information on photos and other things that were collected from that day and their own personal experiences in some cases. So I thought that was outstanding, and appreciate the Wixom Historical Society for suggesting that, and then being such a key part of making that such a good add-on to the events of that day with the passing of our 41st president, George H.W. Bush. So those two things I wanted to make mention of in the city manager update, and then sadly, I wanted to make mention of one more thing. That's on the dates to remember, I had an error in there related to the wine tasting event, five, twelve on the date. Right now, the date stated that it was Friday, February 1st. It's actually Friday, February 15th. So we'll make sure we correct that in future renditions of the dates to remember, but I wanted to make sure I mentioned it here, too, in case anybody was relying on it after seeing it in the council packet. So those are the two things that I wanted to make mention of, or the few things that I wanted to make mention of. Happy to answer any questions or cover anything else that I missed in the updates from mayor and council. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, are the city council members comments. Mr. Smiley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The audit went great. Thank you very much, Marilyn, for that. Just thank all your staff. We're lucky to have you and all of them. Really glad to hear the Christmas tree lighting was so successful. It was a gorgeous night for it, which always helps. And then finally, Serp banks, middle schools, Fall Music Call is this week, Thursday, Friday and Saturday. They're putting on Schoolhouse Rocks Jr. It should be awesome. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gotchel?
Thank you. Also wanted to share my thanks to Marilyn and the finance department for your hard work all year, not just when the audit rolls around. And then community services as well for the tree lighting ceremony, all the planning that went into that. And then also to the fire department and Chief Roberts for hosting Breakfast with Santa again this weekend. I heard from a few people that were around 40 years with the event, probably, and it was just nice to see folks come in with their kids, who said that they used to go to this with their parents when they were kids. So it's a very good community event. I remember going to it with my parents when I was a little guy, and I seen all the young kids excited to see the big man in the next room, so thank you for that. Thank you.
Sure. Mr. Resnick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended this morning's Wixom Business Forum over at Wilson Marine, and they did a great job of renovating that property and making it an exciting place to look and shop for boats, and I'll just keep dreaming about that. Really nice event that they had today, and it was nice meeting Ron Wilson, the owner. Tree lighting was a wonderful success, and it was great to see it, and I'd like to see this event grow and something bigger. Great job, Deanna and Kathy and the whole Parks and Rec team and community services. Several comments from residents that were just passing by us in the beer tent there that, they said they missed some of their favorite vendors, like the chocolate-covered bacon, the Boy Scouts selling wreath. A lot of people assumed that they were going to be selling wreaths there, and they couldn't find them, so. And the maple syrup guy, of course, everybody used that for Christmas gifts. And a lot of people missed the hot spiced wine in the beer tent, which we've had for the last, what, five years, and you didn't have that smell of the hot spiced wine. Again, thanks to Chief Roberts and the entire, you know, fire staff. My family really enjoyed it this year. I was in China, so I wasn't able to attend, but my entire family, grandkids and all enjoyed the Santa, Breakfast with Santa, and my granddaughter cried, of course. I predicted she would. DDA did a really great job with this downtown dazzle, too, and I've heard a lot of positive comments from not only our residents, but passers-through on Pontiac Trail. I thought, geez, Wayne County used to charge people to drive down Heinz Drive, maybe we ought to think about that. No, they did a really great job, and a lot of businesses participated, and it really looks great down there. Nice, bright lit, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leader?
Quickly, just want to thank everybody involved in the audit. Nicely done. And all of the holiday events that go on in the city, it's always well-done, well-attended. Everybody enjoyed it. My kids had a good time. And then just touching briefly on the ordinance discussion, one, thanks to all the residents for coming out and providing their input. It's always a better discussion when the residents do participate, so thank you for that. And, you know, the issue isn't dead, and then the reason that, you know, I voted against it was more for clarification purposes, because I think if any minor changes are just going to be Band-Aids on bullet holes, and we're going to need to just go through a full, I guess rewrite, to make sure that we're not in this situation, if it's been a half a dozen times, try to get it right this time. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our community services, they put on a great events all the time, and can't say enough about the Light the Night and all the rest of the stuff that they have done here. Chief, nice job on the Breakfast with Santa. I'm sorry I couldn't be there to serve pancakes this year. It was something I've always enjoyed doing in the past. Marilyn, congratulations. One journal entry that, you know, that they had, that's awesome. Also, like Councilman Leader, it was more of a matter of getting this thing all worked out and getting the lawyer here to get the input at the same time. Would like to make sure that we get it right this time, because this has come up quite a few times, and I appreciate that suggestion, Mr. Mayor. So everybody, thank you very much for attending and putting your input in. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Beagle?
Thanks. Good work, Marilyn and her staff on the audit, another great job there. A great job, and thank you to Melissa and Deanna and Kathy and for the tree lighting ceremony. I wasn't able to stay as long as I wanted to, but I really enjoyed the time that I was there, and it was, the attendance, right at 5:30, it was crowded over there, so I think it's got a lot of potential to grow. And then thank you for allowing me to partake in the Breakfast with Santa. It's an honor, and it's a great event that you guys do, and Smitty didn't burn any pancakes this year, so it was even better, so. But thanks again for allowing me, and great job, guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I just echo all of what my other council members have had to say, and it was a great Christmas tree lighting, and once again, thanks to the firefighters for inviting us to participate in the Breakfast with Santa. It was really a fun time, and it's really enjoyable to see all the happy faces. The kids are having a good time, and it's always fun. Let's see, you got, did you?
I wanted to add something if I could. I didn't want to cut you off.
Sure, go ahead.
Real quick, the council meeting, normally we have the meetings on the 2nd and the 4th Tuesdays. I do want to point out that we're moving up the force meeting to the, to next week on the 18th, because of the way the holiday falls. I just wanted to make mention that, in case people actually catch this on the count, on the minutes or on the broadcast on our YouTube channel, I just wanted to mention that. So we're going to be meeting again next week on the 18th this month.
Right.
Should have mentioned that earlier, sorry.
Thank you. The only other thing I was going to say is, I, too, appreciate everybody showing up this evening, and it's always better for us to have people here in the audience. I was concerned, and you can tell by the, we're having these meetings taped now, or I guess taped's not the right term, but recorded, and I was a little reluctant to buy into that. I still probably have some reservations about it. But I do know that based on what several people that came up here said, that they watched the last meeting on the video that was on the link on our website, you know, maybe my mind is changing a little bit on that, because it's a good thing to be able to participate that way, and it turns out that people saw it and it motivated some of them to come up and speak public, and I appreciate their attendance. So thanks a lot, good meeting, and I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So move?
For.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Go on.